Scott?
I.
Waters?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shader?
Here.
Can you stand for a moment in silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot it. Well, I wasn't able to because my van's broke, but if you want to just set this on my lap.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you. No, I can't get out of my van. My ramp broke. Like, I can't get out by myself, and so I couldn't get in my house.
Speak into the mic. Make sure I speak into the mic today. Whereas 2,000, I think we have a comma here wrong, 22,192 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 765 personal injuries and were responsible for 248 fatalities in the United States during 2023. Whereas 1,378 pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States, resulting in 663 pedestrians being killed and another 715 injured while trespassing on railroad property right of way during 2023. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety will reduce the number of available avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. Whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, Inc., United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all the aspects of railroad safety. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 23rd to the 29th, 2024, as National Sea Tracks Think Train Week in Sioux City, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. I'd like to present this to you. Say a few words if you would. Into the microphone, man.
The Sioux Railroad, as well as the Sioux Railroad Police greatly appreciate not only the city of Sioux City's commitment from the council, as well as the police department and its citizens, to reduce the number of rail safety incidents that occur each year. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Omar Delgado. Omar here. Okay. We have a proclamation that reads, whereas in 1988, the United States Congress adopted a resolution designating September 15th to October 15th of each year as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the Hispanic community has had a profound influence on our community through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and services. Whereas at least 18,000 of our Sioux City population is Hispanic heritage, which makes up at least 21% of our overall community. Whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the United States celebrates the culture, the history, the traditions, and contributions of Hispanic Americans, specifically those whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, Central America, and the Caribbean. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 15th to October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Sioux City, encourage all our citizens to celebrate the contributions that have been made to our community by the Hispanic Americans. I'd like to present this to you. Say a few words if you would.
Thank you. Our community's success thrives on ensuring our residents feel welcome and valued. Today, newcomers play an integral role in shaping our community, bringing fresh perspective, innovative ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant community we cherish. This past week, we celebrated the spirit of unity that connects neighbors throughout Siouxland. During Welcoming Week, we invite all residents to join in this nationwide movement renewing our commitment to core American values, embracing and rooted in our belongings. By working together, we can create greater prosperities, making our community a place where people from across the globe feel valued and inspired to put down roots. We are united in community, driven by shared goals, and building a stronger, more inclusive for all. By recognizing and celebrating the contributions each of us make to enrich our culture and strengths, our economy, we create a more prosperous and welcoming environment to all who call this place home. Let us come together to build communities where every resident has the opportunity to thrive and contribute to their fullest potential. Let us unite to more prosperous, welcoming communities, reaffirming that Sioux City remains a beacon of freedom, opportunity, and hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Anderson and Dr. Hettinger and the rest of your gang, come on up. One of our special times coming. We need to thank all those involved, but Dr. Dick, you've been very instrumental in this, so thank you for your hard work over the years. This is a great program, and our citizens will benefit dramatically for this October 4th and 5th. So I have a proclamation that reads, whereas oral health care is critical to an individual's overall health, and access to dental care has become increasingly challenging for many Iowans. Whereas for those with low income and without health and dental coverage, the problem is compounded significantly. Whereas on October 4th and the 5th, the Tyson Event Center in Sioux City will be transformed into a mobile dental clinic, where hundreds of volunteers, including dentists, dental hygienists, dental assistants, dental suppliers, and others, will provide free oral care to hundreds of area residents. Whereas the 15th Annual Iowa Mission of Mercy demonstrates Iowa's commitment to provide access to dental care and information on preventive care for a healthier Iowa. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim September 30th through October 5th as Iowa Mission of Mercy Week in Sioux City. And on behalf of everyone in our community, we thank the volunteer professionals and the Iowa Dental Foundation for their service to the citizens of Siouxland. I'd like to present this to you guys and say a few words if you would.
Sir?
So just as the mayor said, the Mission of Mercy is a free dental clinic that travels across the state of Iowa. This is the 15th Annual Mission of Mercy Project, and we're really excited to bring it back here to Sioux City. It's a two-day free dental clinic that provides dental care, including general cleanings, all the way up to root canals, extractions, et cetera. Hundreds of dental professionals from across the tri-state area have volunteered their time and energy in order to put this event on. In addition to that, other volunteers from across the area have put together a great program, including childcare services, interpretive services, and more that are also available to all of the patrons. So if you or anyone that you know could benefit from our project, please join us. Again, the Mission of Mercy at the Tyson Event Center this upcoming 4th and 5th of October. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna do a interview with Mr. Kirk Nielsen for the Civil Service Commission. Appreciate you getting all dressed up, making that side of the family look good here today, Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you for allowing me to be here.
He wouldn't want to tell you that, but we're distant cousins, so. Go ahead and tell us why you want to serve.
I've served on a few boards here with the city since 2006, Fire Department and Police Department, all the way from entry exam, oral interviews, to the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief. I enjoyed doing that. I've been asked to do it several times, and if I'm available, I certainly will do it. I think I can give more to the city right now. I'm gonna have more free time, and I believe in the civil service process, and I would like to be appointed a member of the board.
Yeah, I appreciate your willingness to help us out and serve in those various capacities up until then, and appreciate you taking this step as well. Thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you for making application resumes, really, really.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll let you know.
Good. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you much.
Thanks.
Today, we've got the Consent Agenda, Items 3 through 12V, considering to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is asked for. You want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. Be sure and state your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the Consent Agenda. Second. You guys don't have to stay for this if you don't. I'm sure you've got, you'd rather go someplace else. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, guys.
Three is a reading of the September 16th and 18th City Council minutes. Four is a resolution temporarily closing portions of Morningside Avenue and Peters Avenue for the East High School Homecoming Parade. Five is a resolution authorizing payment to Seawallson Contract Contracting for the Leaf Erickson Park Kennis Court Retaining Wall Project. Six are appointments to Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. A is a motion appointing Nissan Braun to the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. Upon due consideration of the circumstances, the City Council waives a policy that no person shall serve on more than one board or commission. B is a motion appointing and reappointing Aaron Crohn to the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving an air service development grant with IDOT for marketing efforts at the airport.
Mayor, I just want to ask Mike a question about this or just clarify. Marketing's very important at the airport.
Yes.
I know the Board, Airport Board, realizes that. Says funds may be used for advertising, using print, radio, billboard, TV, digital, social media, and sponsorship advertising to promote air service options from the Sioux Gateway Airport. So some of that marketing can be off-site. It's not all at the airport. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say most of it is off-site.
Most of it will be through the, through the social media. Okay. Thank you, Mike. And when I do say the Airport Board of Trustees also approved or recommended approval of this.
Last, last week.
Thank you.
B is a resolution approving a grant agreement from IDOT for the Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Funding for the Terminal Roof Replacement Project at the airport. C is a resolution approving a grant agreement from the IDOT for Airport Improvement Program Funding for the South Ramp Reconstruction Project. D is a resolution approving a transit Joint Participation Agreement with IDOT for the Heat Pump Condenser and Water Piping Replacement at the Martin Luther King Junior Transportation Center. A are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a change order number two to the contract with Rock Solid Trail Contracting for the Cone Park Natural Service Trail Project. B is a resolution approving amendment number one to the Consulting Services Agreement with DGR Engineering for the Cone Park Cone Mountain Bike Park Project. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to electric pump for the repair and installation of equipment for the York Lift Station. D is a resolution authorizing the Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement with BNSF Railroad Company for the Riverside Quiet Zone. E is a resolution awarding a contract to KP Construction for the 4200 Floyd Boulevard Storm Sewer Repair Project.
Mayor.
Yes.
Matt, can I bug you for a second about Cone Park? First and foremost, I think things are looking great. I know we've had multiple events since the ribbon cutting and since all of that has went on. The one question that I had is I know we're buttoning things up with Rock Solid and kind of going through different items with them to kind of close that out. What I wanted to ask is, it's clear to me that we are going to have some ongoing maintenance. I mean, I understand, you know, this item or the change order really was focused on the fact of the rainfall that we had and washing out some of the trails and just what was happening with trees. What is the long-term maintenance plan? I mean, are we thinking this is going to be an annual expense, or is Kelly and your crew able to really be able to keep this going, or is this something we'll have to bring in people occasionally to reshape the trails? What do you anticipate?
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, the event that was mentioned that they had to clean up was kind of catastrophic. We do have a dedicated body to that park now.
Yeah, that's right.
So they are doing things daily, and so we don't anticipate big things, but every once in a while, we could contract out some labor, but we are planning on doing it mostly in-house.
Right.
We're the dedicated person in other park positions.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's good. I just want to make sure that they have at least some certain level of expertise to kind of shape that or reform that. I know that it can get rutted out and stuff like that and trying to alleviate some of those concerns, and obviously down trees or branches that fall on the trail need to be removed, but just wanted to make sure if we had a plan and who we could at least rely on. I know bringing up Rock Solid occasionally isn't necessarily going to be feasible, so hopefully they've imparted some of that wisdom.
Nice thing I also like about the position is just the oversight. You have eyes on the ground, boots on the ground, to be able to see things when they happen. We have good relationships with the bike groups. We have apps to be able to report issues, so there's a lot of positive things going on about that park right now.
I have seen really good dialogue, at least from the community and that type of stuff, so.
And with the new jump line, we actually have it irrigated, and the constant water presence keeps it from eroding so quickly, turning into powder.
And on the Saratoma side of it, how close is that to completion, or where are we at with that one?
90%.
That's what I thought. I saw kind of working on the landscaping, different stuff.
Yeah, a couple punchless things on the other side of the park, and then we're all wrapped up.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nine are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Jamie Gabel, and scheduling a hearing, the property at T-Hanger at 2503 Discovery Boulevard Unit Number Four. B is a resolution proposing the lease property to Mid-America Energy Property in Outer Drive North Right Of Way between Floyd Boulevard and 28th Street. Ten are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to truck equipment for truck parts. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Murphy Tractor and Equipment for a John Deere motor grader. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Woodhouse Ford Chrysler for a Chevrolet Malibu. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license. Twelve are boards of commission and committee. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
I need to abstain on that item I mentioned with the Bob Rose point after. I believe it's 2A. 11, or there we go, 11.
11.
1B.
Correct.
For conflict of interest. Yes, and 2A as well. Thank you.
Passes 5013's Resolution Awarding a Grant in the Amount of $150,000 and Approving a Grant Agreement with the Warming Shelter. I'll move that.
I'll second it. Mayor, I've got a couple of suggestions that might require an amendment to the main motion, but the first one is to make it subject to the Warming Shelter being open and operating for the winter season FY 2025. And then my second suggestion is in the grant, the grant agreement, to add something to the effect, and I'm expanding on the RCA that was given to us. The RCA described relationship to Strategic Plan, Protect Sioux City, Further Support Local Agencies Working to Reduce/Eliminate Homelessness, and Continue to Provide Resources to Mitigate Homelessness and Vagrancy Issues. I'm suggesting that we, and I've made a copy for everybody so you can read it. If you agree with it, I hope you do. The City of Sioux City and its staff are committed to the continued support of an emergen, excuse me, committed to the continued support of an emergency shelter as one agency of many, which make up the fabric of human services to less fortunate of our community. I'd like to somehow incorporate that into the grant agreement that we have. So I should pass these out so you can at least see it. And if I need to make an amendment, Nicole, can you tell me if I need to make an amendment to the main motion?
Thanks.
What do you mean by continued support? Because that might be a...
Not necessarily financial. It could be just that we recognize that an emergency shelter of some form, some kind, could be in our community. We've been doing an excellent job, Jill Wandershide did an excellent job last week of outlining all of the programs that the city has when it comes to homelessness, and transitioning into and growing into, from the Warming Shelter, to finding jobs, to living in a home of their own, or an apartment. And that transition's important, but it seems to all start at some kind of an emergency shelter, or a Warming Shelter, such as we have today. And Jill and her staff work very closely with the Warming Shelter staff, whatever form that takes. And I know the Warming Shelter people are here, and one thing that, and I passed this out, I think, last week, one thing, Mayor, that the Warming Shelter is looking at, they've done a paper, and I think it's excellent, on homelessness, the Warming Shelter and the evolution of a community response. And part of that is a plan of, of the Warming Shelter has evolved into more services, or more collective of agencies having a place at the table, a seat at the table, various agencies like Home Street that also participate in the homelessness population. And I don't think they, I don't know if they formally have adopted this, but it really outlines some progress that the Warming Shelter is making, has made, and a lot of this is from experience and from things that have worked well and things that could need improvement. So, but I'm not incorporating that plan. I hope you'll address it, because I think it's just an excellent step in the right direction in what the expectations are of the people that will stay at the Warming Shelter. So I just think it's a, I'm glad we have this on the agenda. I just think it's a good program. I think we need to support it, so continuing the support would be more than just financial. And it seems like, now I don't have any data on this, I don't have any facts on this, but, but it seems like, I mean, just in the recent weeks, especially last week with Jill Wandershide's presentation, it seems like the more the community learns about what the city in fact has been doing for a number of years, working not only with the Warming Shelter, but all of the agencies that are involved with the Warming Shelter, the more the community sees the support that this mayor and the city council can give, the more others will actually step up, whether it's volunteering their time, resources, whatever it is, there's more of an awareness, because I think we have, I think we have that kind of an impact on the community when we, when we step up. So I think $150,000 is very generous. I think it's meaningful, and I think if we could incorporate, well, the motion itself should have subject to the Warming Shelter being open and operating for the winter season for FY 2025, but if we can incorporate that next paragraph that I've handed out in the grant application or grant agreement, I would appreciate that. So if I need to make a motion...
As a point of clarification.
Yes.
The third paragraph that talks about the continued support that could very easily be added into the whereas clauses at the beginning of the agreement, the question about the shelter being open and operating for the winter season, the agreement is currently drafted for a payment to be made by the city on or before September 27th, 2024.
Which is Friday?
Next Friday. Yes, this Friday.
This coming Friday. So what I would ask the Warming Shelter persons that are here, I think will know more by Friday as to, because they, they have some other things going on this week where everything has to fall into place, and I, quite frankly, I think the city council's action today will be critical to some of those decisions that are being made. I don't know all the particulars. I just know that more decisions will be made, and we should know by Friday that they have what it takes to keep the doors open through the entire winter season.
So to incorporate that direction into the payment paragraph, which should be 2C related to the Warming Shelter being open for the duration of the winter season, that's what I would suggest.
I'm sorry, what was, what's the suggestion?
That the, whereas, the third paragraph be added into the whereas section of the agreement, and then the portion about the Warming Shelter being open for the winter season, I would suggest incorporating that into Section 2C of the grant.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll make a motion then to amend the main motion that the mayor has made.
What if there's other amendments? Are we gonna vote on them? Is that the best way, Nicole, to vote on them one at a time?
Or you could entertain discussion from community.
That's what I wondered. It's like, I'd rather, before we try to finalize or adopt anything.
Is there anybody from the citizens, citizens that would like to be heard?
So we'll just address that after we get the citizen input.
Yes, that would be recommended.
Doesn't fail, for a lack of a second.
Well, thank you for having us here this afternoon. We have several representatives from the Warming Shelter. We appreciate your...
Need your name and address, Joe.
My name is Joe Twidwell, 256 Firethorn Trail in Dakota Dunes. I'm the treasurer for the Warming Shelter. Thank you for considering this. 11 years ago, a grassroots effort recognized that there was no emergency shelter in the community. While we had other shelters, there were, there was not a true emergency shelter, and it began in the front of the soup kitchen. Interestingly, we used some of the people who were homeless themselves to watch the other people. We didn't have a manual for it, and it wasn't at the instigation of anybody. It was a recognition that people in prior years had died on the streets. And from that, that first beginning, very humble beginnings, it's grown since that time. And today, the shelter serves, on the average, in the winter, about 100 people per night. On the really difficult night last year, the severe blizzard, we were in excess of 150 people. And one of the things, as the shelter evolved forward, because it was a grassroots effort, it operated solely upon donations from the community. We didn't, there was no manual that was given to us to tell us how to organize or how to do this. It was just basically people in the community, and we enlisted initially, our board was made up of the agencies that support the residents that we took care of. For example, several of the churches in town, the police department was represented, the sheriff's office was represented, but also the other shelters were represented, and agencies that supported, like Center for, Center for Siouxland. And our idea was that we weren't, we weren't going to be a standalone agency. We were more of a servant agency, where we would take people at the very lowest point of their life, save their life, and then work with the other agencies, as we do now, to get them back on their feet and into society. We, as Mayor Protim Moore noted, we worked very closely with Jill and Clara and their staff. We can't, we can't place people in houses. We have to go to those agencies to get the housing vouchers. We work with Community Action Agency and Community Health for health services, but we never intended to be the end-all agency. Well, we just, one of the comments that came up, we did not intend to, by the announcement that we made, to insinuate that, you know, that people were doing bad things relating to us, so to speak. But we found that in looking at our budget, there was, there was a sentiment among some people that the Warming Shelter might be the cause of homelessness in town, and for that reason, we had several of our donors that stepped back from donating because they didn't want to be a part of a problem, when in fact, we know that there's 21 agencies in the downtown area. We all serve the needs of the homeless. We all serve the needs of the homeless. And so one agency in the downtown is not the genesis of the homeless problem, and I think, as in other cities, the same situation exists. But this summer, as we saw that those donors had stepped back and we were coming up on the winter, we had to make a decision. If we did not have sufficient funds to make it all the way through the wintertime, what would be the most just and reasonable thing to do to give people sufficient notice so that the other agencies in town could begin planning for our absence if we couldn't be there? Because closing down in January or February, if we ran out of funds, would be disastrous. And so what we wanted to do is, first of all, give the community the opportunity to assist us if they felt that there was an important, there was a need for the shelter, but also to give the agencies we work with the opportunity to help us place the people that we were already sheltering and then also plan for what would happen in the wintertime. Now, as Mayor Protim Moore noted, you know, one of the things that the board passed this summer was a restructuring of the shelter. You know, again, we didn't have any, any manual telling us how to do this, and one of the, one of the things is, how do you, how do you hold people accountable while still saving lives? And so we put this proposal together, and it was passed by the board, that if the shelter would be open this winter, we would essentially divide the shelter in half, and we would still have one side of the shelter that would provide minimal services, very minimal services, but a warm, safe, dry place for people to sleep. But they would not get the same amenities that if people agreed to breathalyze, if people agreed to help out around the shelter, and also have a work and a residency plan where they're working with the other agencies, then they would get the additional benefits of showers and bunks and things of that nature. And hopefully, it would encourage people who were not taking those steps to look and see, well, I can, I can get these benefits if I, if I make these additional steps. And if they do those kind of things, hopefully, then we can get them engaged with Gospel Mission and with Hope Street, who have programs, and so that they'll, they'll move forward. And so, again, we would appreciate your favorable consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions for you if some of you have questions.
Joe, I have a couple of questions, I guess. The first one, well, I'll start here. The first one in referencing of the kind of evolution or that document that you presented that you said you adopted or talked about over the summer. When you were developing that and talking about that better coordination or the separation and then that, were those other agencies involved in that initial discussion, or was this just the concept? And then if you would implement it, you would approach them and ask for their assistance with that kind of transition?
This was the concept we present, I presented to them, and we actually had our first meeting last week on Wednesday over at Gospel Mission.
Okay.
The representatives from Hope Street, Gospel Mission, Community Health, and Clara and one of the other staff members from the city were present. We're hoping to add SULAN Mental Health and probably Mercy Medical Center to that, too, because they, they have the most immediate contact with a lot of the homeless people. And so they're, they're all committed to this concept, again, and that we would have, they would actually be a sub-board to the warming shelter where they would actually set the policies. And so we're going to meet again this Wednesday at noon and, and continue the dialogue moving forward.
Okay. And then the secondary question I have is, just regarding this $150,000, to me, it just, I guess it was a shock to see it formally on the agenda, and for that reason, it was just, I was kind of going off of a lot of the coverage and a lot of the things that had been said as far as, you know, this $150,000, while a large step, wouldn't be sufficient to be able to get through the winter months, and it was the hope of the warming shelter, or I believe you said specifically in, in your interviews, that you would need something that was more funding, but, and then also the ability to prove that that would be committed over three to five years. Is that correct, or what? I just, I worry that this, I would, I would like to support, I agree with Dan on his comments of the need for an emergency shelter, I do. But I also think that I don't want to act out of haste and think that, you know, we better vote on this, we better pledge the $150,000 without a clear path forward. I think of, you know, what that organization looks like, what those steps are necessary, what the funding looks like to ensure, as you stated, that we're getting through the winter and able to have a sustainable solution.
Well, the one thing, after discussions with Dan and the, the possibility getting, getting out into the community, one of the things that we wanted to do, and it was part of this, our, our objective, was to try and get $500,000 per year in five-year pledges. And we have made some substantial headway in, in getting to that number. And going in, we've never had a year where, going into the year, we knew where any substantial part of our money was going to be coming from. It was all going to be coming from donations, and there had been some unusual events, like, for example, ERC, that came up, well, we got $92,000 back. Well, that was a dramatic difference. And one of the, one of the businesses in town one year named us as the sponsor or as the agency for their golf tournament. So again, but looking out, we didn't see any of those single events. And so the one thing about the information coming out, I would, I would say, as, as painful as this process has been, the dialogue has been exceptional. And it's, and it has really brought, I think, the agencies and it's brought the community together to really focus on, how do we, how do we collectively do this so that we actually help people get off of the street, get back into the workforce? You know, what we want to do is try and help, for example, you know, Hope Street has been so phenomenal, they've got 60 or 70 people in a very short time back into a living arrangement and working and that. And so if by creating this new structure within the shelter, if we can help start creating the expectations and the hope on the part of people that they can turn their life around, then when they get to the other agencies, there's a waiting list at Hope Street, and a lot, a lot of the shelters are full right now. So, but if we can create expectations and behaviors at our level, then when they get there, they're going to have a far better chance of succeeding as they, as they move on. But the cities, just the rumor of the city's possible support for this year has caused many individual donors and businesses to come forward and say, we need to be part of this, we recognize that this is something we need to do. So the one thing, as you were talking about, the timing of this, the thing that we, as we've approached other people in the community, they've said, well, what do we do if we give you your money and you close? And, and we've said to them, we don't want your money right now. What we want is your commitment that if we do, if we are able to continue, that then you're going to be there for us. And so we have been taking actual funds, we've been taking pledges from people, but we, we significantly moved forward towards our goal of at least having nearly half of our annual budget committed for the next five years, and then having sufficient funds to cover the entire season this year.
Yeah, and I guess I'll, I think that's all I had as far as questions, but just to comment on some things that you said. I couldn't agree more. You know, I think that this started as initially a difficult conversation and certainly a difficult situation, where I think there were rumors flying and, you know, people felt like they were accusing or villainizing one side or the other, you know? I think we both were on that side, or at least I certainly felt that way. And, but through that, I think there have been very meaningful conversations where multiple organizations have really stepped up to have a larger discussion about what is the path forward, how do we do this, and what is a sustainable option, working with an emergency shelter such as yours, but also activating all of these other organizations to take an active role in that, so that we are rowing in the same direction, rather than the right hand not knowing what the left hand is doing. And what I will say, though, is, I do remember, excuse me, I do remember a conversation that we had not so long ago where it felt as if we were having a very similar conversation about the $50,000 and how the city's pledge to do that was going to open up additional funds and signal to donors that we were taking this issue seriously and that it was going to lead to a longer-term solution. And so just being transparent and honest with you, because if anything, I, I try to be brutally honest, is that I just have that same fear. I don't want to make a pledge more substantial such as this and then have it looming over me that we're, we're going to offer this and it's still going to happen as far as the closure. So those are some of the fears and things that I'm thinking about and considering. I appreciate the conversation that it sounds like that are continuing to have, and I think that we all need to be on the same page and finalize some of those steps so that you can get those pledges, you can make these, make these things known, whether it's a different entity such as you're describing, you know, that can then make some of those changes and evaluations and set forth the plan that then we can vote to release those funds, or I don't want it to be that we take this action without a clear step forward, at least I'm not comfortable with that. But I think that we're on the exact same page as far as what has been happening and what I'm hopeful of will happen so that it can sustain.
Well, again, if you, if you modify your motion as opposed to having it paid out in September, saying if the shelter, and the remainder of it, saying if the shelter does remain open, they receive the remainder of their funding to remain open for the season, the city could be the last $150,000 for the year. Well, because that, that then, we either have it or we don't, and, and, and we're going to, we're going to have written pledge agreements with, with the people that have pledged for us, and so.
What date would that be? What date would that be, then? You're saying if ours comes in on the backside, what date would you want it?
We're going to be open 365 days. Our season runs.
That's what I was just going to ask, is it going to be a 12-month shelter?
Through the winter, pick a, pick a time, a date that you would like it sometime in the winter, is what I'm saying.
Very probably it would be towards the end of the winter, because people are very generous during the holiday season. We'd have more individual donations, small donations, but when you get out into the spring, people in tax season and that, they're, they're far less.
February 28th, work?
February 28th, it'd be just fine.
Well, and along with that, or discussing some of those options, I mean, that's kind of what I'm looking at, is you're discussing pledges, you know, from the community or different agencies and organizations, and I understand that, that they're pledging that support for continued support. You know, it's almost as if, well, I'd be more comfortable with the city pledging, look, we want to participate, but we want a, a more concrete plan set forth by what is going to be occurring, what the, the goals are, the aspirations and the coordination. I think another point to think about would just be, is this a new entity? Is this the warming shelter? Is this new coordination with these other various entities? Is this a board, like you said, then, that's a sub, you know, subcommittee or a board underneath the warming shelter, or if they're setting policy, do they supersede that board? You know, and in that case, do we give the pledges, or at least our pledge, to that separate entity, you know, to lead out that cause? Those are some of the questions, then, that I would have as well.
Well, the way we've proposed it to the group and we discussed last week was that it would be a sub-board from a liability standpoint, where the warming shelter is a 501(c)(3), it stands alone. The idea would be that if the agencies participated, there would be some type of hold harmless agreement going back to the agencies. The fact that they were participating and voting and being involved, they, it shouldn't trigger liability on their part. But going forward, the, the hard reality is, all of us know that there's a lot of toxicity associated with the term warming shelter. And so I think we're all in agreement that whether it is the existing entity or some new entity, it's going to have to have a different name to go with it for the community. But again, we only have met once with that group, and we have another meeting scheduled this Wednesday.
Some more details.
Yeah, the thing, the thing I'd ask you to reflect back on, though, is, you know, for the last 11 years, the Warming Shelter Board has, you know, done essentially all the work. And we've provided 150,000 nights of shelter, over 110,000 days of shelter, and we've had no deaths in the community that we're aware of due to exposure among the homeless population. We're trying our best, you know? But one of the things that, that we feel is that somehow, actually, the success has, has hindered us in a way, because if you say to some people, well, nobody's died on the street in 11 years, they're going, well, then what do we need a shelter for? Nobody's died. Well, the reason why is because you've got an emergency shelter that, you know, some of us are going out during the first blizzard and we're going under bridges and we're looking for people, trying to make sure they don't freeze to death. And I, I guess I'm asking for you to trust us, and, and we're, we're offering up some of our goodwill to, you know, that we're going to try our best. And, I mean, if you talk to, if you talk to Jill, or you talk to Clara, or you talk to Randy over Gospel Mission, or Sarah at Hope Street, they'll all tell you, our staff is doing everything they can to help those people, but we can't do it without money.
Yeah. I completely agree. I think they're extraordinary and extraordinarily dedicated.
Yeah, so.
I think for purposes of the, of the pledge, it would go to Warming Shelter, Inc., which is, which is the 501(c)(3), because all of your pledges that you've been working hard to obtain, they're going to that 501(c)(3) entity.
Yeah, and, and Fitch and Graves, those are accounting. Nichols Rise audits us on an annual basis, and the state, we, we get a small amount of money from the state, and the state audits us also. And so, I mean, our, our records are pretty much a wide-open book to anybody, but what other questions?
I would like to jump in here. First off, because I would like to participate in the discussion, under the advice of legal counsel, I, I do need to make it publicly stated that I am no longer a board member. And I think you could verify that. I tendered my resignation prior to any talks about the warming shelter closing happened. So I, I don't perceive as me having a conflict of interest today. But I, I do want to state some things, being a past board member, that I know that the warming shelter has done. Number one, for years, you've been involved with the SULAN Coalition in homelessness. And so part of being involved with that coalition is, you're involved with other entities that deal with homelessness on a regular basis, and there is a lot of feedback provided. There's a lot of opportunities and grant funding opportunities that are discussed as well. And I, I think that you've always been very involved, and I know Shayla's very involved with the coalition in homelessness as well. One thing that came out of discussions with that group, and, and one thing that as a board tried to focus on, was eliminating what we saw as, as maybe unneeded overhead costs. One of those costs was security. For a long while, we were paying a large sum of money to security. And through Shayla's guidance and, it's too bad she's not here today, but she put a focus on trauma-informed care and made sure that staff was trained for trauma-informed care. And what we found is that that, that need for security lessened as staff became used to having these positive interactions with people and approaching them in a different way. Whereas before, the first thing that you saw when you walked through the doors of the warming shelter was a security guard. And that's, that's very alarming for people. It's very hard to relax and, and, and not, not feel like, you know, you're personally in some kind of danger. If you have to be patted down, there's a guy that looks like a police officer or somebody official staring at you. And I think- And I think that what we've seen because of that is it seems like residents, for the most part, have really appreciated just being treated, you know, with that level of respect. And that's also had the, I suppose unintended consequence of saving the warming shelter money. So I think that we've made great strides in trying to tighten the budget over the years as well. The other thing that I want to note, Alex, you had a question about other agencies' involvement. And what Joe was explaining before is when the board initially was rounded out, they took a look at other agencies throughout Sioux City that dealt with homelessness, kind of the first people that see or interact with any of those individuals. And so the board members that are currently there are from many of those agencies. The Sulan Community Health Center is represented, and, I mean, we can go on and on. Hope Street has a representative, you know, that serves on both boards. So there's a lot of overlap with other stakeholders from the community, and I don't think they've ever, I mean, we're in recruitment almost all the, I shouldn't say we, but they are in recruitment almost all the time for new board members. And just a few things that I felt like I could speak on. The last thing that I really wanted to talk about, and it's kind of the elephant in the room, is we spend a lot on homelessness as a city. The press conference detailed a lot of it, but there's a lot that was not detailed. When we have to go out and clean up under a bridge, or when we have to pay the tens of thousands of dollars for a bridge because there was a fire set underneath it, or when we have to send an ambulance across town for an individual that, I mean, there was just an individual passed out on the corner of Wesley Way and Hamilton just the other day in the grass, that is all a cost to the city. If the warming shelter were to close and those individuals were to disperse, you know, and sleep wherever they could find a place to lay their head, that would exponentially increase the amount of money that we would have to pay. That would be more fires and abandoned buildings, more fires under bridges. And we do have real dollars that we can go back. I mean, we just approved the payment for the West 19th Bridge, which a fire was started under last year. So we do have money that we are spending currently that could be prevented by having a low barrier and no barrier to a roof over your head. So that was all I wanted to say.
What Matt was referring to, we were paying one of the security services $25,000 a month to have security on duty 24 hours a day. And with that trauma-informed care that Shayla and Bob Sheehan conducted, we've been able to eliminate that. So that was a big expense, but it has not resulted in additional police calls to the shelter, though. Actually, they're able to calm people down and sometimes when things are starting to go a little bit awry, calm them down and still allow them to stay in the shelter then as opposed to ramping up the problem. And so it's been very effective. Well, again, we thank you for your consideration of this. We're trying to be a good community partner and...
Yeah.
Take support to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Anyone else?
My name is Janet King, 1423 Virginia Street. I am not part of the shelter as far as I do not work there, but I do deal with a lot of the people that go to the warming shelter. And I think one of the things that really impresses me about the warming shelter is, because I've worked with the people in the community in that area for 15 years, when you build a support system with them and they learn to trust you and they respect you. We were in a building for 12 years and we were never graffiti, never broken into. Then when we left the building, now today they're boarding up all the windows. People think that homeless people are not good people, but they are. They're just in circumstances that sometimes they can't get out of. And one of the good things about them being able to go to the warming shelter is they start to trust the people that are there to help them. And when you trust somebody and then you have the ability to go to AA, to go to NA, and to have staff say, hey, you know, go take a shower, you know, here's clean clothes, they feel better about themselves. And when you feel better about yourselves and you're given the tools to become the perfect citizen or fit in with the society, you succeed. And that's what the warming shelter is doing. It's giving people who are down on their luck, who may not feel like they're worthy of being here, they give them the chance and the ability to make better for themselves. And when they make better for themselves, they make better for the entire community. So that's what I have to say. I have to say that I just think that the $150,000, you guys are investing in this community. That money will invest in people that live here, and that's what we need. We did a taco, a native taco cell Friday, and when I tell you guys, it was so amazing to see the support. People came just to talk, just to find out what was going on. And I think that's a big problem, that the community, with this shelter being possibly closing, people have learned about it. They've learned that it's not like it was when it first opened up. They've learned that people are getting housed and there's children that are going to school every day. You know, I grew up like that. We grew, I was homeless. We lived in a van or a station wagon down by the river. So this is important to me because, you know, I'm 61, so there wasn't anywhere for us to go. And if you guys go and you see these kids getting ready to go to school, they're clean, they're neat, they have the clothes they need, they have shoes, they have backpacks. When they leave school, they're coming to somewhere. It's not their fault. And, I mean, you can't really say fault for anybody because situations happen. But this warming shelter is giving people the chance and the ability to step up and be productive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend the main motion to direct or ask the city attorney to include these following statements in the grant agreement. Number one, subject to the warming shelter being open and operating for the winter season, FY 2025. Number two, grant funds will be dispersed on February 28, 2025. And then thirdly, the city of Sioux City and its staff are committed to the continued support of an emergency shelter as one agency of many, which make up the fabric of human services to the less fortunate of our community.
I'll second that.
I...
Discussion.
I truly feel as if this is such a difficult situation, at least I feel like I'm in a difficult situation, because I want to support the warming shelter. I do, and I believe in this mission. I believe in the continued conversation about emergency shelter. I think it's needed, and I think that all of those things are essential, and I think that this is a fine step that I would be comfortable taking and saying, yes, we want to have a financial commitment, you know, to ensure that this is happening through the winter. But I guess I'm just giving myself pause that I feel like this all has happened so rapidly, and the organization that says that they were just closing has now had one meeting with other area agencies and organizations to begin developing a plan for what's going forward, and then immediately following that, after one meeting, the city steps up and finds $150,000 to give it and hope that everything goes well. I just feel like that's not doing my due diligence. And so I feel like by voting no on this, it's going to seem unfair or that I'm not supportive of your efforts, and that is not at all the truth. So I just at least want the staff and the people here to hear that, that while I want more information about this new organization and about the plans moving forward and what it is, and that we have their support, or they're at least here to voice that commitment and to lay out some of those guidelines or what their plans are and how we're going to improve the situation overall, until we would at least have more than one initial meeting, I just, $150,000 is a great sum of money, especially in this community and in the times that we're in, and especially the budget that we have. I have no doubt that we will come to the table to support this, and I hope that I'm given the opportunity to support it financially again here, or once we have that plan established, or if this moves forward and it passes, great. I want to be a part of the continued discussion. I hope Joe or whoever has those meetings, I would love to attend. I understand we can't necessarily have quorum, but I would love to hear from the other agencies, you know, about their concerns and their commitment and what they want to do moving forward and how we're going to build off of the momentum that such a great crew has made possible for 11 years. I'm hopeful for the future of our community, I am. And I want to be a part of that, but it just, this feels, when I saw it on the agenda on Friday, when I finally got to open my laptop a second and look at the agenda, it just felt very premature, and honestly, it puts me in a really bad situation with that, and I think that's unfortunate. But I at least wanted to voice that.
Are you asking for a deferral? I think time is of the essence, Julie, on this. And that, and there is a sense of urgency, and maybe that's what you're feeling, Alex, and it, but I think this is well thought out, and there is a trust level that we're working from both ways. You said it so well just 10 minutes ago about just the discussion, conversation we've had with both sides. It's been very helpful. Sometimes it's, you know, it's not easy to have difficult conversations, but from that can grow a lot of successes, a lot of ideas, and a lot of improvements. And, you know, my hope would be that this plan, and I didn't know the board had already passed it, which is good. I mean, that means they're moving on it. They're making, they're trying to make a difference by making some changes. That was on that last page of the financials that I handed out. That's where this is. It was like page, what would it be, page four? It was behind the financials and behind the annual budget. And so I was thinking, with this plan, this is, in my opinion, having those agencies sitting at the table with the Warming Shelter Board is very critical to making these changes to moving forward. So a deferral would, I think, would pretty much, well, I'm guessing, Julie, but I'm thinking that's, that would be a mistake, because then I don't think they would know if they have the support or not, and they really need to know this week if they're going to have that support so they can continue to make the arrangements that they have to make. You want to talk?
But I just, I...
Stuff to say, if you...
And I guess I'm just confused as to why they would, if we're not even releasing funds till February, I'm just saying I would love to know more about these meetings and hear what those steps are to implement this plan.
Releasing the funds in February gives you a chance to have a comfort level. They said February, and so that's why I asked Dan to move it to February. Let me just say a few things. This is going to step on some toes, but quite frankly, the last two weeks, my toes have been stepped on a lot. And it's very unfortunate that if you rate the Facebook pages by members of our community, it's the mayor not showing leadership here. You know, I don't operate well in a crisis mode, and this was a crisis that presented the city. We didn't ask for this crisis to be presented to us. We didn't ask for us to get one month to decide something. We didn't ask for any of that. But quite frankly, we've got it before us because it is a crisis. And trashing people, police chiefs and mayors and council members, when we don't even have all the facts, that's not fair. It's not fair at all. Now, I'm going to plug my nose today and vote for this because I think it's important that we have a plan going forward, and we're in a crisis, so sometimes you have to vote for things that you wish you had a longer time to put a plan together. I know where you guys are at. But this isn't just $50,000, it's 200, or 150, it's $200,000. We've already given 50. You wouldn't even have made it to October 1st from what I saw, if we wouldn't have done that. So the city has stepped up. I think it's terribly important that your lines of communication are a lot more open than they've been in the past. You guys never wanted city money, so we didn't care about lines of communication, because quite frankly, you were doing your own thing. But now I think it's important that you keep us abreast of your meetings and you keep us abreast of your fundraising efforts. It doesn't have to be me, it can be Dan Moore. But the demonizing on both sides has to stop today, and we need to go forward in a positive manner, or you're not going to be successful in your fundraising, and we're going to look awful stupid in the community for giving money out for a plan that doesn't work. So I just hope that this is a step forward from this, on the city's part, that allow you to go do what you need to do in order to do your fundraising that'll keep the shelter open through the winter. But I'm sorry I feel the way that I do, but I'm not immune to reading Facebook, and you don't have to read very much of it the last couple of weeks to realize that it was a little bit unfair, because I didn't even know you were closing till about three weeks ago.
Me neither.
It's been alluded that I did, but I didn't. So that, it's just, to come up with a plan in three weeks, I think we've done a great job. And quite frankly, the money that I suggested to Bob Padmore to use is from Agape, because it's money we didn't count on, and it seems to me that it's more kind of a holistic approach to homelessness and drug rehabilitation and that, is why I did what I did. So, go ahead, Alex.
Well, no, I, well, I mean, first, I agree wholeheartedly, and like I said, I agree that this is an emergency situation. I want to support, but I just wish there was anything. We have a number three on here. I agree with you, Dan. I didn't know this was voted on by the Warming Shelter Board. I didn't know this was an official document representing what had passed. I didn't know, I don't know if all of these organizations have agreed to be a part of it. I just learned that there was a meeting on Wednesday, and that's why it just seems extraordinarily unfair...
Yeah.
... to ask me to vote on something. I wouldn't want anyone to ask me that, let alone if it's an important thing such as this. And I'm belaboring the point, and I think it's out of frustration, so I apologize.
And Alex, and I don't want to argue with you, I want to work with you on this, but Hope Street, the Gospel Mission, Sulan Community Health, they have made those commitments from what Joe has said.
But I've...
They're still working with Sulan Mental Health, but, you know, you have to do. Could, may I say something too to the mayor? May I address your comments, Mayor? I want the community to know that, and I don't want to contradict what you said, but I want to add something, some information. I want the community to know that our mayor did in fact show leadership, because I got a lot of help as far as direction on how to go on this. And so he shows more, he was showing more leadership than you realize. Not everything makes the media coverage, not everything makes Facebook, and sometimes you just have to do what you have to do in a crisis mode, and the mayor stepped up. I just want everybody to know that. The mayor stepped up to the plate. He always has and he always will. Do he and I agree on everything? No, we don't. But that's healthy for the community. We don't agree on everything. Julie and I might not agree on everything, but that's healthy for the community. But I just want everybody to know that, because that's important to me for you all to know that.
You have to come to the mic. You have to state your name and address, please.
I didn't know that it was on the last page. I thought that was just financial, so I apologize.
Greetings. My name is Calvin Harlan.
I have it at my house.
I live at 3290 Martha Street, here in Sioux City. And sitting back here listening, I represent the Omaha Tribe. I sit as a tribal councilman, tribal leader. I sit as a tribal councilman, tribal leader. And, uh, this morning, we had a very interesting meeting over here at the Ponca Center. And in that meeting, I kind of felt like we were being blindsided, much like how you're feeling and what you're, what you're expressing here. And, uh, we talked about it, we met with the staff of the Warming Shelter. They came and they, they explained to us the situation that they were looking at closure. And, uh, I believe the gist of it was they were asking the tribes for help. As I come up here, I only speak for the Omaha Tribe. The Secretary of our Tribal Council sits back there, he also attended the meeting. And, uh, I wanted to come here and, and see what the, what, what the outcome was going to be, you know? I've been up here before, on another occasion, I've met Dan several times. The last time I was up here, we talked about a building, and I think it had something to do with one of, uh, our probation officers having an issue with the homeless being moved out of an area or something to that effect. But, uh, in that meeting, I, I, I stated, you know, let's, give us a building, and we'll fix it. And, and we'll provide these services out of that particular building, whatever, wherever it's at. There's models out in Seattle, Washington, San Francisco, California, that do the same thing for, for Native Americans. And it's just not regulated to one tribe. You know, I think at that time, I also stated that there were more than 40 tribes represented here in the city, tri-city area. And this morning, the number came out that there were at least 20. And so, um, we had a meeting after the meeting, and I'll share this, we have a Ponca representative here, from the Ponca Tribe. Uh, I believe she sits on the council as well, leadership. And so, uh, we talked about trying to assist in some way that we can. Over across the river, we have the Nebraska Intertribal Coalition of four tribes. Uh, I think over a year ago, there was talk about contributing something to the Warming Shelter, because of the, the high numbers of, of native people. And, uh, I, I wanted to let you know that, that we felt the same way that you do, specifically you, especially me, because I, I, I'm one of these guys that likes to, likes to know where I'm coming from, where I'm at presently, in which direction this is going to go. And, uh, we wasn't sure if, if, uh, this organization was going to stay open. Now I hear about the Facebook posts and how damaging those can be. You know, I stay off of Facebook, you know, especially in my present role as leadership for the Omaha Tribe.
I should too, sir.
I know. You're a much smarter man than apparently we are.
Well, let's just say that, uh, you learn from experience, but, uh, I, I believe that if we look at this in the long run, and like I said, I, I understand how you feel, I truly do. But at the end of this, is, is the people that are out there, native, non-native alike. You know, they're, they're looking for a place to go. Uh, they bring a lot of baggage with them. But I think there's, there's programs within that assist them with, with getting on the, uh, the, the straight and narrow, as it were. One of the things, I worked in chemical dependency 20 years, I retired from that field, and I would never do it again. But, uh, speaking on the positive side of that point is that if we give people the right tools, the right mechanics, they'll make something of themselves. You know, it's, it's human nature to, to eventually get tired of the way that you live, and you want something better, or you want something different. You know, and, uh, on the native side of things, when we come to that, we, we, we make a change for the positive. We always do. And, uh, a lot of our people, when they come into these communities like this, there's culture shock, because we're really family oriented, traditional family oriented. And, uh, the thing about that is, is that when you miss home, you find something else to sub, substitute that. And oftentimes, it's not good. But here, when you come here, and you substitute that with these programs to give you a hand up, that's what I looked at. That's kind of what I looked at, is, is the human interest side of this, because they're going to do what they do, you know? And, and, uh, we talked about it again today, about the, the, uh, um, not the donation, I guess, so much the idea is the idea of investing this money into, into the community here. And it's not much, you know? We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, as tribes, we encounter our own, our own social economic issues. But, uh, I wanted to come up here just to say that, uh, uh, we have to think about those human beings out there, and those little people, you know, those little kids out there, like this, this lady back here said, you know? And, uh, I think it would be real prudent to really look at the programs that are being offered there, simply because they are hands up. But in the meantime, we still need to, uh, um, try to assist where we can. And I think for tribes, and I'll, like I said, I only speak for the Omaha Tribe, we're, we're trying to look out for the best interests of our people, whether it's at home, or whether it's here, or anyplace else in the country. I've done my traveling. I've seen the underbody of New Orleans, you know, but, uh, today, it's good to be home, you know? And, and we've got to make home as comfortable as we can with some of these programs to be that foundation. So, uh, I understand 150K is a lot of money, we deal with those things every day ourselves with our council. And there's times that we've got to hold off Peter to pay Paul. But we do it, we get by somehow. And so, uh, I would just ask that you, you consider this, uh, because you're not alone in your confusion, you know, I'll say that. And, uh, we, we, uh, we want to help, though. At the end of the day, we want to assist those people that are in need of assistance at that hand up. So I just want to say that much, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I hope our actions will make your decision easier, so thank you for your
And Calvin, what's tough for me to hear, though, is I think you're spot on, I agree with you, and, but you don't even have a seat at the table. You know, I mean, that's just it, is it's like, that's another thing where I would love to have the tribes represented, because I tell you what, kudos to you for staying off of social media, because I think, I think a lot of our native people, and I think that you want to talk about demonizing in the community, you know what I mean? And I don't like that, and I want you to have a seat at the table to be a part of the solution, but it, it breaks my heart to feel that confusion, because I look at people like Travis, and I know what this has meant to him, and it doesn't make me feel good to do that, it doesn't, I'm not saying I don't want to pledge the money to support, I just wish I had more.
A better foundation.
Yeah.
Better foundation of understanding, communication, all that good stuff. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
I'm Carl Hardy, and I've been living in this town for the last 40 years. I came from Omaha, I was raised in Amarillo, Texas. When I came to Sioux City 40 years ago, I fell in love with this town, because I felt like the people in this town cared about people and cared about me. In 1989, as you know, we had a terrible tragedy in this town with Flight 3232. This town came forward and did what needed to be done to save many, many lives. That sold me on Sioux City, Iowa. Okay, when this thing came up recently with the, uh, shelter, I was very impressed with the fact that basically, in a very difficult situation, the city council stepped up and took it on. They realized that they didn't have much to say about this at the start, because it was thrown in their lap. And I want to commend our mayor and the city council for taking this on and doing the best job they possibly could to put this situation in the best form it could be in. Now, the Warming Shelter has stepped up, and they're doing the best they can to make this a better situation for the people in this town, and for the people that they would serve. Many times, I look as I go around this town, and I stop, and I, every once in a while, I'll give some funds to a person on the street to help them out. And these people need our help. I've stopped before and talked to them, and they basically said, if the Warming Shelter goes, we go. This is something needed. And as far as people coming forth on Facebook and stuff like that, forget those people. They don't know what's in the heart of the mayor and the rest of you. You guys care about the situation, and you're trying to do the best job you can. I commend you for it. Thank you.
All right, on the amendment. You got to call, call the roll on that, please.
Waters?
Just your luck, you get to vote first.
Yeah, exactly. I, I hate how this is going to be perceived more than any of you sitting here or listening on the air will recognize, and it's not my intention to say that I'm not supporting the Warming Shelter. I wholeheartedly will and am committed to that solution, but I, I have to vote no.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
I'm going to vote aye, and I don't think Alex should, you should feel bad. I, it's, it's not eas, it's not easy to vote aye, and you don't have to apologize for that. You've got reservations, because it came together so quickly, and I appreciate your vote, so, thank you.
Well, all I'll say is if you feel like this regularly, Mayor, I don't want any part of that, I don't
Now, on the regular motion.
You can vote electronically on this one.
Passes four to one, Mr. Waters, votes no. Any citizen want to be heard? Please come forward if you do. Date your name and address for the record.
My name is John Williams, 1701 Ross Street. I sit here listening today that you guys talk about, you think things are unfair with the Warming Shelter, and this has nothing to do with the Warming Shelter. But I hear what you're saying about things being unfair. I've got a different scenario. Several months ago, I went to the dump, and they had a sign in the window that said, dump trailers with construction and roofing, stuff like that, now had to go to Jackson. Friday, I went, I had a measly thousand pounds worth of furniture, junk. I was told my trailer was no longer able to go to the dump. I have to go to Jackson. Now, I will say, the lady let me in, but I had to manually unload my trailer. I don't think it's fair to people who have dump trailers. I understand if it's a business, they have roofing, construction, whatever, that they have to go to Jackson. But I had a measly thousand pounds, and now being forced to drive 30 miles round trip to dump my trailer, because I choose to use a dump trailer. I, in fact, any would use my eight-foot pickup box trailer, because it dumps. They are not allowing any dump trailers, large trucks, anything. I think that's totally unfair. There's a new sign in the window that says, you cannot dump here, you have to go to Jackson.
Mike, why
I understand, you told me it's cheaper, but you know what? At $10 cheaper, it cost me $20 to drive out there and back.
Why is that? I know construction, I get that, but they've never said
I don't know, I'll have to follow up on this.
Get his phone number.
There, there's this, uh, sign in the window in the right-hand corner, I should have took a picture of it, I didn't think about it.
Why is it about
But you know, I just, I don't think this is fair. You know, why should I have to manually unload my trailer when I can hit a button and dump the stupid thing and be out in 10 minutes?
We'll see if we can get you some clarification. There was a couple of concerns I heard, um, recently about them no longer allowing cash.
Yeah, that was posted on Facebook.
Yep, and then Alex Waters actually brought a concern about them no longer, um, offering compost. They used to compost yard clippings and things like that, and then you could go
I don't know about that, but I also know they raised the rates.
It sounds like there's been several changes out there. I wish we had an answer for it.
We got a memo about the no longer accepting cash.
Yeah, about the cash. Well, that was put on Facebook the other day, I seen that. Along with they raised the trees to 63 bucks a ton. You know, I guess here's my thing, they get paid for some of this stuff out there. The metal goes to compressed steel, they get paid for it. Trees, some company out of La Maris comes in and chips it up and sells it. Why are we having to pay extra when they're making money on the backside of it? The recycling, I'm sure they get some out of that, I don't know.
I, I think it's some misconceptions there too, though. I mean, we have to, it's paid staff, you know, it's paid to manage, there are costs that go into that. It's not something that we can do for free necessarily, but I understand, and I, I don't think any of us were aware of the dumping restrictions. We're happy to look into that.
I don't think it's fair that I'm being forced to drive, especially over in Nebraska. DOT Nebraska is really harsh on everybody.
I agree.
They'll pull you over with pickup with lawnmowers.
Yeah.
And I'm pulling an eight-by-14-foot dump trailer, guess who's going to get pulled over?
Yep. Be sure and give your number to Mr. Colette, and, and we'll, we'll do some, we'll do some follow-up with you, okay?
Well, I don't think you should be able to force people to drive to Nebraska.
Well, we'll follow
And I noticed Bob left, because we've had this discussion before.
Yeah, he had, he had another commitment.
Okay, wow.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Yes?
I'm told to have a whole roof, well, I put it on tape. Sorry, my name is Angeles Rodriguez, my English is not as good.
You're okay.
Can you
Keep hold the mic.
Hold that microphone right now, yep, that one, okay.
There you go.
So, um, I'm Angeles Rodriguez, and I'm owner of, uh, 1211 Douglas Street. And I'm having some issues, it's been probably more than six months already. It's a lot that you guys own, the city owns, it's like a little park between 12 and 13, maybe in the corner of Grandview Street. So, we have a lot of people there, some homeless people, and
Is that the old restaurant?
No, it's not that restaurant, it's right on 13th Street. It's like a little park, I will say.
14th?
13th.
Between 12th and 13th.
Behind Come and Go, kind of, right?
Uh, it's more like, it's in Grandview Street. It's kind of
Oh, is that Rose Hill?
Yeah, about, close to that.
There's the fire truck and stuff, it's that, that park?
Yes, so, 12 and 13
Something. Anyway, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same place.
Um, so, there's a lot of people there, and so I have tenants, it's, it's like a five-plex. So, those, the people are coming to my property, because they're staying there, but they don't have any dumpsters, so they dumping all their garbage in my property. So, sometimes when my tenants don't have a place to put it, so they just hold on to the next week. But they, since the dumpsters are full, they bring their stuff and put it in bags, garbage bags there. But I think some animals come and just rip it off, and garbage is all over, so I've been having problems with the city, telling me they need to clean. I've been cleaning these for six months already.
Yeah.
And I think, right, right now I don't have no time, because I have, my mother's sick, and I had to leave my job to take care of her.
Do, do you know who your trash collector, are, are you through Gil, or who you're through?
Uh, was through Gil.
Okay.
So, I talked to, I think it was Sarah.
Era. It was probably Era.
Right.
Yeah.
So I was trying to see if she can help me with this issue.
Yeah.
So, she says, well, let's see if we can get a dumpster in the place. So, I go, I can't afford more money, because I left my job, so I don't have any ways to pay for a dumpster.
Oh, okay.
And she says, uh, don't worry, I'm gonna, we're gonna provide a dumpster, you don't have to pay more than you're paying right now.
Because how many trash cans do you have right now?
I have five.
Okay.
For each of your units?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's what, yeah, I would wonder if you could work with that, and it sounds like Era will work with you on maybe securing a dumpster?
Yeah.
Because then I know that Gil was providing, I, and don't quote me, so I, I don't know if they still have them, but they were providing some of our downtown businesses, um, in places that requested them, locks for the dumpsters, and then you would be able to give your tenants the key
The key.
To that, so that people weren't, you know, abusing that dumpster and things like that. I mean, that could be an option, but at least if you're working with Era, hopefully she's taking care of it for you.
Let's have Mr. Colette follow up on it as well, if you would.
Yes.
If you'd follow up on that with Era.
Okay. The thing is, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, so be sure and give, give him your number. Don't do it from there, but just give it to him when you come, when you come up.
Well, farther, you know, um, so I, she said she's going to provide that. So, Gil went and took all the dumpsters, or no, the, the containers.
Yeah.
But never brought the dumpsters. And what happened is that we have an issue last year where they didn't receive the money. But my bank sent them the check for, why, oh, at that time. But they never got it. So, I sent them a receipt from the bank that I paid for that. So, I thought that issue was solved last year. But in the computer, they don't have it. So, now I don't have, I think I owe like six hundred, that's what they say. So, I go, it's been paid already. I talked to someone. But they didn't get it on the computer. The person is not longer working there. So, they don't have the records that I pay. I went to the bank to see if I can provide, you know, the receipt or, you know, the proof that I paid. They, they send the check. They cannot go back more than six months. So, this is getting, it's getting overwhelming for me, really.
So, right now, there's no cans at all?
There is no cans at all.
I'm so sorry.
Well, right, right now, so I had to, I can pay the six hundred dollars. So, I had to go through, because I talked to Era. She told me, well, I don't care what you do. You had to, that's your responsibility, and you had to provide your tenants, you know, those containers because you can't be without it.
That's true, but your, I, your bank can go back farther than six months.
That's what I told you.
They can. Yes.
So, I think I, because I was gonna, I told.
Yes, should not pay the six hundred again if you know you already paid it. And go back to your bank. And maybe you need to speak with someone who has more knowledgeable or a supervisor or someone because they can go back years.
Yeah, I agree. It's gonna be some kind of proof, right?
Yes, there is. They can.
I guess it doesn't matter how long.
Yes.
Because I can't, you can use close, that whatever happened.
They can go back.
So, anyways, I couldn't afford, Sarah told me that, oh, Era told me that I had to provide. And I, it's my responsibility, and that's fine. So, then while there are no containers there, the people were putting all the garbage. And I had to hurt somebody because I don't have no time to do.
Well, Mike will get in touch with them first thing tomorrow. And you give Mike your number, okay?
Okay, well.
We'll see if we can get this worked out.
But I got that problem solved because I called Waste Management. That's what Era told me, oh, somebody has to do, like, if they cannot help you with that, you don't have the money, go to a different source. So, I went and got those containers. Okay, Sarah told me that, Era told me that I need to get the place cleaned, which I've been cleaning it. I don't have no time right now. I got those containers, but the people realize there is no more containers there. I just hide them on the, you know, in a place that they cannot see it, only the tenants. Well, they're putting all the garbage there. And I've been cleaning it, and again, they call me, the, the city called me and say, you got garbage there. They go, I can't do this anymore. And, yeah, I mean, I tried to, you know, ask for help because I don't know where to go. So, I called the city, oh, I don't know, we can't do that. I called the police. They cannot help me either. So, I just need some help from someone.
Is there still a big pile of?
It is, it is garbage again.
Okay, so this, this obviously isn't something that we can solve right now. But what Gil Holling does is they do provide out to some of the different neighborhood coalitions vouchers for trailer loads to the dump. And Ara may be, may be able to speak with somebody at Gil Holling to see if we could get a voucher. Do you know anybody that has a, a trailer?
No, I don't know anybody that, my issue here is like, I was just thinking.
And then, and then we can, we can focus on how to secure the containers to prevent it from happening again. But we want to make sure that we get everything if we're able to help.
Yeah, well, when you lock the containers, the people needs to put their garbage somewhere.
Yeah.
So, what they do, they used to, they put it right in the street, right where my property is. So, they already know there is, used to be trash cans there. Now, there is nothing.
So, they're just leaving over and over.
All they can do is just dump it. I was thinking if there's any way that you guys provide a dumpster in that little lot where they stay in?
It's an empty lot?
It's an empty lot.
Okay.
And all the people are gathering there.
Well, let's let Mike follow up on it, really. We have to check.
And we need more information.
Yes, and please contact your bank again. They can go back more than six months and get your proof, you know, so you get credit for that. And then Mike will follow up with Era and Gil Holling and, okay.
Right, Era told me to talk to you guys, and I just, this is my first time.
Okay, well, you did a good job.
Well, good job.
Just go over and give Mike your phone number. Not from there, but go over and give it to him privately.
Okay.
Okay.
So, right, and also the, the people are like doing things that they're supposed to be doing. And then, you know, fights and, you know, acting, you know, not, not good for kids to see. So, it's just be an issue for now only me, my tenants, but my neighbors too.
Oh, yeah.
And, but we don't know what to do. And so, I don't know if you guys have a way to lead into shelter or somewhere. I don't know. But it's been an issue for a long time. So, I really desperately need you guys' help.
Yeah, and if that's something, I mean, if there's a lot of criminal activity that's happening too, or especially if there's individuals that are dumping garbage on your property, then we want to make sure that, you know, we're letting the police know and, and making sure that they're patrolling the area when they're able to help try and deter some of that too.
Yeah, like I say, I'm complaining with the police, and I got videos of people dumping. And they say, well, there's nothing we can do because that individual is not there. So, it's nothing to pursue. There's nothing.
Do you, do you have like a security camera or anything? Or anybody in the neighborhood?
Yes.
So, I know one thing that Ara's done in the past is if people are illegally dumping within the city limits, she's able to cite those individuals. I, I mean, obviously, if, if these are individuals that change all the time or if, if there's other issues, that might not be a good solution. But that might be something that we could look into if at least we can figure out who's responsible for it or who's doing it. And it might help the police officers as well identify the individuals that are there so that they can have those conversations or help you have those conversations with them too.
Yeah, that would be nice. I do have evidence of the people. I have videos. And then they're dumping, and they put things on the street or.
I'm sorry.
They're just put there. So, it's just.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate that.
I appreciate your help.
Anyone else to be heard?
Hello. My name is Larry Banks. I live on One-O-One Allen Street.
Can you do me a quick favor and just move that microphone right up?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
We went from shorter to taller. This ain't working. Yeah, sorry.
Can you say your name one more time?
Yes, it's Larry Banks.
Larry.
I live at One-O-One Allen Street. I'm the operations officer at the warming shelter. Um, I, I just want to introduce myself. And I came to this town in, in twenty-two, August of twenty-two, with thirty-five days sobriety to go to a halfway house. I've been battling my addiction for twenty years. I heard really good things about Sioux City and the support that it offers. So, I wanted to come. And it was my eighth inpatient I'd been to. And, and I hadn't been able to get more than a month or two sobriety after inpatient. And so, I figured, well, let's try this place out, you know. And the city's been really good to me. And on the Fourth of July this year, I actually reached my two-year sobriety.
Nice, man.
I didn't think I'd be able to.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So, I wanted to get back and so I joined the warming shelter staff, the team. And I did that in October of twenty-two. And I've watched the, sorry, I'm really nervous.
You're good, man.
I've watched the, the evolution of, of not only the, the staff and the organization and, and what we do there, but also the residents in response to that. The residents, a lot of them have to put up a, a hard front in order to survive on the streets. And that can be perceived by people as, as if they're bad people, or they're violent, or criminals, or any number of horrible, bad things. I've found that that's not the case the majority of the time. Actually, I haven't found anybody who's a horrible, bad person that I've encountered there. This place, working here and, or working there, rather, and meeting these people and getting to know them and being able to be active in, in their lives and their progress has changed me. It's given me an appreciation for, for not only what I have, but it's also it's shown me where I don't want to go back to. And I just absolutely love the place and, and the staff we have are, oh, man, they're, they're just so amazing. They, they genuinely care about every single person in there. Without them, none of what we've accomplished for this last year or two would be possible. I want to thank every one of you for your votes, even you, Alex. I, you said no, but you, you, you're standing firm with, with what you believe. And I hope that throughout the next year or two, that by our actions and by, by what we do and how, how we present it and everything else, that we will be able to give you a reason to vote yes.
It'll be a lot shorter than that, man. I don't want it to be a year or two.
Well, I'm just saying.
I, I, I know you guys will do better stuff. I know. And I think you're having great conversations now, and I think you have a good team.
Now, thank you for your comments and congratulations one day at a time, you know? It's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, good to hear from you.
Thanks, Travis.
Anyone else?
Travis Larry.
Mr. Okane, anything?
Well, these last two weeks have been a blur. I feel like we were all very extremely busy. But I, I had a ton of fun at the League of Cities. I have email after email in my inbox of partner cities and other council members from other cities and other agencies. Things that I got really excited about, but when I told my wife, she was notably less excited about. But I'm sure all of you are excited about them too. So, that was, that was great to be a part of. That was my first time. And it was, it was a ton of fun. And I think we were good hosts. I, my, the, the other three-D art teacher at West High also works at the Diving Elk, part-time, as art teachers, as teachers in general, all need two jobs nowadays. And he said that they were just busy, non-stop. He said you could, you could really tell that something big in town was happening. And, and, and he said everybody was in a great mood. It was very, very, very busy, fun time that they had last weekend. We had Art in the Alley, great turnout to that. Some amazing artists, new artists this year, which is what I personally love to see. I like to see new artists coming to our community or that are in our community getting involved with art initiatives like that. So, that was a lot of fun to attend as well. And then I got to give a quick plug to Mr. Colette here, who
Oh, boy.
had a great joint transportation meeting.
It was a good meeting.
Um, and I think we all learned a lot from that meeting too. So, I shared a personal anecdote of one of my students who I shared the app with. And I gotta, I gotta remember the name of the app. I've got it installed on my phone. But a quick plug to Passio Go. If you use public transport in Sioux City and you want to know where the buses are, Passio Go, get it installed. That's everything for this week. Thank you.
Wow, Matthew took half of what I was going to say. Sioux City hosted the league, Iowa League of Cities. We did get a ton of feedback. There were around four hundred folks who came into town from various cities. They were so impressed with Sioux City and the progress that we've made in this last five years. They said they couldn't believe it. They enjoyed touring the amenities, just touring downtown. I too spoke with one of the business owners downtown. She said it was her largest, most beneficial day during a week that she's ever had. So, it makes a difference when we have tourism in this city, you know? People are out and about, walking, spending money, enjoying our neighborhoods, our downtown and other, you know, areas. Yes, we did have a great joint meeting. We also had art in the park out near your neighborhood, Alex. That's about all I have. I think that it is a concern with the warming shelter. I don't want to discount that by not bringing it up. It's very heart-wrenching knowing that, you know, there are people out there who don't have a home, that don't always have a place to stay. They're not always very well-received when they're found around wandering or, you know, perhaps littering like this lady just talked to us about. But I hope and I pray that this gives the warming shelter kind of the eye-opening, that they really need to have a continuum plan, that they need to not just have a dotted line to the other agencies in town, but they need a, a line, a solid line, to get these folks into the places that they need to support services that they need to make it permanent so that it's not just a warming shelter, as they said. They want it to be lean more towards an emergency shelter, which would mean it's more temporary. So, I look forward to that happening in the next month or so.
Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, sometimes it gets to this point and you have so much to say. And then all you can think about is you can't look past the discussion and everything that happens in the meeting before. So, it's really difficult. But I am very committed to the future efforts in our community to combat homelessness. And I am very hopeful, like Joe said, you know, that some of, out of some of the discussions that have been happening. And I'm just frustrated, the timing just was poor. You know, to be able to give, I think, oh, at least myself a sense of comfort. But I am excited about the direction and some of the conversations I've been having. So, I truly feel that our future is really bright and that we are going to have a collective effort towards truly a sustainable solution. Because I think that there have been some shortcomings and things that we need to do better. I think we all would agree that there are things that people on both sides of this could have done better. And I'm hopeful that coming out of it, we will learn those lessons and truly have an effort and find, um, find that common ground. So, we all are working towards the same goals and singing the same hymn. I think that that, that's important. But I will touch on some of the things because, Matthew, I'm with you, man. I, these last two weeks, I don't know how I've, I thank God I've been getting good sleep most nights because I need to refresh and I've been way too busy. But I will touch on the League of Cities, I thought was an extraordinary event and just something that was so beneficial for our community, but also individually, I think. If, I think we were able to attend different things or have various conversations. And I know I had some takeaways and some things that we were, that I certainly learned, both from vendors that were here. I mean, they had the, every square inch of the convention center, main floor covered in vendors the first night and, and the next morning. And then to be able to have such great breakout sessions where there was good discussion about what other communities were doing to combat different issues or address different situations, I thought that that's just so helpful to collaborate and learn from others. Because I think that we really fail when we think that we always need to reinvent the wheel. I want to give a shout-out too. I mean, I think the league was was not only a great event, but I also want to give kudos to OVG Three-Sixty. I think that they deserve a lot of credit and a lot of recognition for stepping up and adding this to their portfolio and really rising to the occasion. To be able to do all of the things they did, I mean, thinking about not only the league with the number of participants, but then also having the Chamber Dinner. To be able to do that in another one of their organizations, yes, in the same day. And then to not only have the rest of the league, but then the league thing conference, but then be able to flip it and have nature calls that very next night. So, all of those things, I mean, they, and they make it look pretty effortless. And I just, I think that I was at all of those events and I just, I think that I was at all of those events, and every single time I was amazed the number of staff I was bumping into. All the staff were on deck. They were talking with patrons, asking if they needed anything, assisting them every step of the way. I was really proud. I do think there are some things, I'm gonna have a meeting on the thirtieth with Jessica as well as Nick, to just have a conversation about some things that I think we can do to improve for next time, because, I mean, it's no surprise to all of you if you sit in a joint meeting. I love commending when things are going well, but then I always have a list of a few things that I think we could do better. So, I made sure to make mental notes of those and look forward to that conversation, because we should always strive for excellence, and so, but I'm really proud of that team. And then, yeah, as Matthew pointed out, the Alley Art Festival was, I, I love that, the celebration of art and especially sharing it for free in our community. The event was a fundraiser, I mean, for the continuation of that, but a five-dollar entry fee is pretty modest, and now, now, if you didn't make the festival, now you can enjoy them for free. But to be able to go through those alleys and see twenty-seven new murals, and some of them, yeah, new individuals. I spoke with two people that were from out of town or had never been here before. One was from Chicago, and he couldn't speak highly enough of the event and said, "You know what I, he's like, 'I'm gonna do everything I can to come back and paint a mural next year,'" because he was just vending some of his art, and actually, he, his wife is from Sioux City, and he got married in the Orpheum, and he was like, "Oh, my gosh, I want to be a part of this." So, I'm really excited and hopeful for the future. And then lastly, Nature Calls was a great event, and a lot of money raised for Dorothy Pico Nature Center. I think that that's sometimes an unknown or unsung amenity in our community, and I think they're doing some really great things as far as education, bringing young people, exposing them to nature, and teaching them classes, doing all kinds of fun hikes and programming. So, I'm just thankful for all of it, but I'm ready for a nap, that's for sure, but homecoming is right around the corner, so no, no rest, that's for sure. That's all I have.
Move to the chairman.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Waters.